We call the Berkeley City Planning Commission to order for its regular meeting of Tuesday, October the 27th, 2015. Would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a roll call, please?
Smith?
Here.
Murad?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Shadle?
Here.
Tengary?
Here.
Buckler?
Here.
Pop?
Here.
Morrell? Barnett?
Present. Now I'll indicate, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda this evening.
So moved.
So moved.
Mr. Tengary is making a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Second, supported by Commissioner Murad. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes. Now I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 22nd meeting of the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Pop, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Buckler?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes. Communications?
In your packet you've got the master plan amendment that you adopted, all bright and shiny, and you've got a report from me from the Michigan Association of Planning Conference I went to a couple of weeks ago, and you have a communication, an email on the Woodward Avenue Complete Street, you'll recall that you had endorsed it, and then I guess it went to the Woodward Board and they made a couple of adjustments, seemed relatively minor, wasn't going to affect Berkeley's section, so I don't know if you want to re-study it or say that everything stands. I mean, they do want council to endorse it, we've got some, I'm concerned about the maintenance of the service drive and MDOT's position on that, so I want to, I'm going to be meeting with the city attorney, and I've already discussed it with the DPW director on if this plan, I mean, if we had the money in the bank, it was going to take 20 years to do. In the meantime, what do we do about the service drive and the maintenance of it and making it look a little nicer? And that's something I want to talk with the city attorney about and DPW and get some ideas together for council before we move forward with an endorsement.
Was, when I read the two, I read the letter
Yeah.
From the lady from MDOT, and then I looked through this piece here, I thought there was an indication in here that this was going to go to the Attorney General for something?
Oh, it did, and that's why you have the letter.
Oh, the letter is, it came after the attorney?
Yes.
Oh, so the Attorney General's agreeing with whatever's here?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So I see why, okay, you want to have further discussion, good.
I think we need to.
Yeah, okay. Before we take it to council. Or, maybe the Planning Commission wants to look at it again, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
If I understand this right, the two changes they made in the email are purely the Pontiac Loop and
Bloomfield Hills.
Bloomfield Hills.
Correct.
Did we not defer recommendation?
Yes.
So, why do we need to discuss it some more?
I'm just keeping you informed.
Okay. I'm just asking.
I guess the only question I have, and maybe it's a moot point at this juncture, is, like you say, is who's going to take care of the, and I don't know whether it'll come up before council or not in discussion.
That's why I want to, I want to have a plan in mind.
Okay.
We had a meeting with the Woodward communities and there was discussion about what do all the cities do, and some, it's, they have a principal shopping district, some it's their DDA, some it's just, we always thought it was MDOT, and anyway, so it's, some cities have ordinances that say you've got to do all of it, not just the sidewalk, so they asked Debbie Shutt, the executive director, to maybe come up with a table saying how the various cities handle it. But again, I think we've had enough issues with Woodward and whether it's, you know, do we just pass an ordinance and say it's up to you guys, do we do a special assessment, do we do some sort of principal shopping district which would be an authority, and there's lots of options?
Okay.
And I think it's important to explore it with the city attorney and DPW and give council a full picture of
Okay.
The tools that are available to them.
Fine.
I agree.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Richardson?
Just to make sure I'm clear about my mind, these are issues that, they're going to come up no matter where this plan goes, right?
Right.
This is aside from the plan in a sense, am I right?
Right.
And since the plan is not budgeted, there's, it's a nice vision, but, and it's a great, it'd be great, but again, it's going to take 20 years to build if we had the money.
Certainly, I would defer to your judgment about this, I'm going to anticipate, Mr. Chair, that we're going to be asked to act on this plan before these kind of issues get resolved, however.
Well, I think we're going to be, the city council would be asked to endorse it, and that's up to obviously council on how they want to handle it, I think it's our duty as staff to present this and say this is an issue, this is going to continue to be an issue, whether it's this plan or whether it looks the way it, whether the service drive stays the way it is, and this is what MDOT's informed us of, these are some ideas on how to resolve that if you want to.
Oh, and I agree with you.
Right.
I'm not prepared to act tonight, but
No, we're not doing anything.
I just think we're going to have to probably act before any of this gets resolved.
Oh yeah, this is
Forty years it gets
Yeah. We may be all gone, who knows by the time this
Yeah, let's defer it to the next commission.
Okay. Enough on that, I guess, for the evening. Citizens' comments, I'll open it up for any citizen who would care to address this Planning Commission on any topic. Not on our agenda, they may step up to the microphone, state your name and city residence, and you may have the floor. I'll remind citizens, they have an opportunity to participate in discussion items as we move through the meeting this evening. Okay, Ms. Fanson, I guess we're ready to start.
Item number one is site plan review, SP 0415 DA Contracting regarding 2160 Coolidge, northeast corner of Coolidge and Harvard, is seeking site plan approval for the construction of a vestibule. You do have a new set of plans, I sent my comments to the applicant, I don't, I don't often do that, but because of the scale issue and there were some other outstanding issues, I thought it would, I'd hate to see a minor vestibule end up deferred for a month if it didn't need to, if I could send comments, and the applicant did have packed his drawings ready Thursday after I had dropped them off at Public Safety, so it's too late.
All right. Is your architect or speaking for Beaumont, or are you the architect?
No, I'm an owner and contractor, so we have purchased the property, and my construction company will do the improvements at the property. We are doing a physical therapy clinic for Beaumont Hospital, and it's about a 5,000 square foot physical therapy center, it's an existing facility in Royal Oak that is being removed from the hospital and moved over to a new location. The hospital's removing lots of uses inside the hospital to gain more space for the care of patients, they're out of space, so this area, Royal Oak, Southfield, anything within one mile of the hospital's going to see a great increase in Beaumont leases in the next few years based on their needs and requirements that they're pushing out of the hospital to expand. So with, with the floor plan as it exists, we can accommodate the tenant and make it work, but Beaumont's a strong advocate of conservation, heat, you know, containment inside the building, et cetera, so they don't want the waiting room open to a direct door, and so what we tried to do was to encapsulate the vestibule inside the existing sidewalk of the facility and not impede out into the parking area, et cetera, to accommodate their needs. It also needs to be fully ADA accessible, automatic doors, et cetera, et cetera, so we've tried to do all that and then accommodate the existing building that sat for a little over seven years or eight years and accommodate their needs, so again, I think it's a great use for the property, it's not a restaurant, it's not a, I've heard the nightmares of what's going on in the past, so we hope that it's a great use for the community and a better place and use for the property.
I'll open it up to the Planning Commission for discussion items.
That's right, that's right, I'm trying to get at you.
I have a couple while there. How many people are going to be in this building at any one, at a given time?
Employee wise, there's about five to six employees that are constant, and on a service basis, they are servicing between six and 10 people at a time.
What's their timeframe when they have people, and they're hour, two hours?
Thirty minutes to an hour is the average physical therapy appointment.
So we might have up to 16 people at a, at one time in the building?
Correct.
Potentially another 10 waiting.
And perhaps 10 waiting, so that's What's the parking, what did we have as the parking?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Well, and they gained a couple, so you have 36 now.
Thirty-six?
And again, we don't call out physical therapy as a type, we have medical.
Yep.
That requires 38, I don't know that physical therapy is necessarily straightforward.
I'm not even
General practitioner office, I think it's different.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, I just, what I don't want to see happen is I get an overflow of parking and it ends up on the residential street, that's my only concern.
Well, I think it would more likely end up on Coolidge, probably, given
Okay. Other comments from the Planning Commission, hello?
If it's
Hello?
Chair?
Or Mr., Ms. Buckler?
If it's PT, there may be a lot of drop off and pick up, if it's people coming for physical therapy.
Mm-hmm, I don't know.
Well, I mean, if you've just, you know, had your hips done and your knees done and not driving, maybe it's dropping off and picking up, I'm guessing.
I would have to guess, and not everybody's parking.
So if I may address, there, we eliminated the spaces behind the building for simplicity's sake, there was a lawsuit in regards to the alleyway that goes through the back of the building
There's accessibility to the adjacent business.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we can, we can add another five spaces there, but, you know, the bottom line was, I thought that I wanted to present the parking that really made the most sense, the client and tenant in fact is not concerned about the parking, their requirement inside the lease was less than 30 spaces, so I think we've accommodated them, they know their business, and, and there is a fair amount of drop off and pick up, there's also a fair amount of people that drive physical therapy by their own vehicle, and so I don't think that we're going to see an extensive overflow of parking that comes out of the requirement of the use. If it was a, more like a doctor's office that had pediatrics, let's say, you would have a whole lot more intense use than this use. They, they only have so many pieces of equipment that can be worked on and beds at a time, and so they have, they have six beds total that are therapy beds that are, where if you've been to physical therapy, you know that you get worked on and then you go out to machines and get your physical therapy
Right.
Adjustment to work, so.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Shadle?
What are the proposed hours of operation for the facility?
They are about 8:00 AM till 6:00 PM most of the time, they go to 7:00 PM two nights a week.
But not past 7:00?
Correct.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Richardson?
Do you anticipate lighting the parking lot?
The existing parking lot has community lighting in it, which there's two poles, there's a pole in the center of the parking lot, there's a pole on the, on the, what would be the east side of the parking lot, on the, which is covered by trees at the moment that we're about to trim up and get rid of.
Okay.
Then we're adding seven LED wall packs to the existing building where the previous owner, I don't even know who's the previous owner, the previous person who did renovations set a bunch of light locations inside the building, that we've got boxes that exist for light locations, so the alleyway side and the front side will be lit by new LED wall packs that are cut off fixtures. So I drove by there tonight to see, you know, how well lit it was, between the intersection, the community lighting, and then what we're going to add to the building, it's probably one of the better lit facilities, it's going to be on Coolidge Road.
And how close is the neighbor to the immediate east?
To the immediate east is
On Harvard?
Well, we have, I'm not sure if that's, is it the school that is, we've got two things going on, where the, where the wall jogs, we have residential, which there's an existing community lighting pole that's on the residential property that comes up on the backside of the masonry screen wall that exists, that's, that are going to be trimmed, and then it jogs back, so at the closest point between the building and the residential is about 44 feet, and then it jogs another 30 feet back where it goes up against the, I think it's
You have a house next door to you on Harvard, and then you have Oxford Towers, that's on, that's kind of behind the building.
Okay, I wasn't sure what that was further away on the
Yeah, that's, yeah.
East side, northeast side.
Right, that apartment building. Yep.
The Oxford Tower parking lot shouldn't be a problem.
Other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Tengary?
One of the things that I do see that concerns me here is the width of the driveway on Coolidge, I'm seeing that the end of the parking space, at the end there is, is kind of in the driveway, I mean, I know there's, there's, obviously you've got 24 feet of width that feeds into the, to the maneuvering lane, but is there, is it possible to curb that so that you don't have somebody maybe turning in and possibly clipping that or running through that space or clipping a car in that space?
So, in reading the comments from the review letter that I received, there was a lot of discussion about the existing conditions and the parking lot and that, so it's our full intention to replace the entire parking lot and repave, and then repair the existing walks and that, so the, the access point on Harvard Road where it's really pitted out is going to be redone entirely, and then we have reviewed the concrete along Coolidge, and there's, A, about six or seven slabs of concrete that need to be replaced on the sidewalk portion, and then we could also curb back that, it's, unfortunately, it's not really a, there's not really a radius there, it's just kind of all concrete and going up to it, so if we were to pull a piece out of there and pour back a new, you know, I think the curb's about that tall.
Gotcha.
It very easily could be done, just, it's, it's kind of, at this point, I agree, it's about 37 feet wide, I measured it after the review letter, and it could be narrowed down to be more defined access.
Yeah, I just think some sort of visual cue for drivers turning in that says there's a parking space here just could be helpful, from a safety standpoint.
Mr. Chair? What is protect, excuse me, what is protecting your vestibule from the cars parking in front of it? It's about six inches from the edge of the concrete walk, and that walk, on the east end is maybe four or five inches high, but as it, as it travels towards the west, it's zero, the differential between the, the top of the walk and the top of the pavement. What's going to keep a, someone from
Driving in.
Mashing your nice new vestibule?
Currently, there's parking blocks there, and we probably should have denoted on the new plan that parking blocks should go back.
Okay, yeah, I don't think there are any blocks there now, but you will be putting parking blocks in?
I will, yeah.
I could be wrong.
I'm right, I'm 100% with you, and there was a comment about, originally the glass was going all the way to the, to the ground level, and my comment was, we probably don't want to do that, so we put block there, and then the comment came back, why doesn't the brick match the building? And so we changed it to brick to match the building, but it does need to have a stop point.
I would suggest, just from past experience, a couple bumper posts, I know nobody likes the looks of them, but for the sake of your brick, it might not be a bad idea. And, okay, I see all the notes on here, I had all kinds of notes about the existing condition of the parking area, and especially the Harvard approach, which was difficult to transverse, I guess.
It's a little better than Michigan roads, but
Yeah.
It needs to be replaced.
I've seen worse on I-75.
Right.
The biggest concern I had was protecting your, your, your new vestibule. The dumpster, I see you're going to put new gates on it, fine, that dumpster's currently about five feet tall, not six feet tall, does that bother anybody? I know our standards are six feet.
The walls are six feet?
Yeah, it's right about here on me, so, at the front of it. Personally, it doesn't bother me, but, because it's, it's existing, but we can, we can take a little vote.
I think as long as the dumpster is screened.
Right.
I don't see that
The wall, the wall, the, the screen wall is taller than the dumpster.
Okay, well, that's
And I don't think a six-foot dumpster wall's going to screen it anymore from Oxford Towers than a five-foot dumpster wall, but
Well, a little comment to that, Beaumont is huge into recycling, and they probably won't even use the dumpster per se that's there.
It'll get used, but maybe not by you folks, but it'll get used.
Yeah. Well, the dumpster I dropped off there today is probably getting used already.
Probably right now. The, the, speaking of the, the screen walls, it's not beautiful, but it's fairly sound, and it does step down at Harvard, not to the 30 inches or whatever, our, I think it's about 42 or 48 inches at Harvard, and I think there's, you had some comments in here, Amy, about, about that, but it does step down at the sidewalk. Is it enough? I don't know. Since you're going to repave, you'll make sure all the, the two barrier free spaces will be ADA compliant, you know, but, you know.
Unfortunately, I'm putting a physical therapy
Right.
Right in there that needs, they're very, very restrictive on
Oh yeah, I would imagine, yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
And we usually char, we usually ask for bicycle spaces, bicycle parking, but I don't know in a physical therapy or occupational therapy if that's something that's really necessary.
You know, it's not always going to be physical therapy.
Well, it might not always be, you're right, and that's
The staff?
The staff could ride, you're absolutely correct.
Right.
So, you know, that might be something that we put up here in the front corner off of Coolidge, maybe not, maybe in the back, but consider a, Amy, was that, was that expressed to them?
Yeah, that was included.
About a bike, bike racks?
Yeah, we require bicycle parking. Again, if the applicant doesn't want to fit it in on the property, then the, we can, you can buy one and we'll put it on the right of way.
Yeah, it's a minor thing, but it is something in our ordinance, so
Okay.
I think, I think that was it, you got a couple guidelines back to your light pole on the east side, which will mess up a space, but I don't think that's going to affect anything as far as your
No, we're in the process of, we have to put a new pole in for DTE because of the service side that has to go in, so they're working through setting a new pole and then reworking a couple of the guidelines, et cetera, that
You may lose a space because of that, but I, you know, in light of our earlier conversation, that probably is going to be a big deal. Are there any planned improvements to the existing site lighting? Those two old Cobras are pretty
Well
Nasty.
DTE is, is doing two things, one, they're, they're reviewing our new service and, and coming up with a plan for the pole that needs to supply the new, we have to basically step up the service to new voltage.
Sure.
The, the second piece is they're going to improve the pole in the center of the lot and then reset a, a new head on the property on the east side.
Okay, so that'll be shielded from the residents to your east?
The, I have not requested that to them, but
Yeah, we will request, we will request that, yeah, so it doesn't shine, and also the wall packs, maybe if you provide a copy of those to staff
Yeah, they're full cutoff wall packs.
Okay, good, good, she'd still like to look at them
Sure.
And, and I think, all my red marks, most of them were answered, so with the new plan, so I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments, Mr. Chair? Mr. Murad?
What's the dimensions of the new vestibule? I couldn't find that anywhere.
It's seven feet deep, and it is approximately 12 feet wide.
Okay. All right, the other thing I think I'd like to see is that the Harvard approach, a right turn only, for exiting cars, so if they don't turn into the
I have no issue with that.
Okay. And I think all my other comments were answered by other questions. Okay, I'm good. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Morrell, welcome.
I apologize for my, my tardiness, I mistakenly planned a meeting for 4:30 to 6:00, and it went 4:30 to 7:00. I guess I have a question for staff first, to what extent, the, I mean, when I look at that building, and this is particularly pertaining to the lighting that's going to go on the exterior, our original site plan review included elevations, and we approved a light fixture at least a look that was never completed.
Correct.
I'm a little concerned when I hear the term "wall pack" applied to Coolidge Highway. When I think of a wall pack, I think of a square box, even if it's zero cutoff and it just has a flat lens, I'm thinking fairly unattractive, spills a lot of light, and in our original site plan, we had something that was more decorative, almost an accent in nature, as opposed to trying to actually, it was really just there for looks as opposed to anything actually functional. So I'm a little concerned about what fixture specifically is going to be on what I would consider to be the front of this building, which is essentially the west elevation and the, and the south elevation. On the back, whatever you, you need to illuminate back there is fine. I guess I'd like to see something more in keeping with what we approved originally as opposed to something more something more institutional, and again, you maybe, a wall pack is a pretty ubiquitous term that the contracting industry uses almost universally. I'm just a little concerned that your definition of wall pack and our definition achieve some kind of alignment here, particularly with regards to those two facades.
And again, I don't know what was originally shown and approved, you know.
It was like a pretty sconce, I mean, it was just a real pretty sort of gooseneck kind of thing.
Yeah, and so we got two, we got two things happening, one, we have to provide a certain amount of light to light that area. Two, we all want it to look good. So I don't have an issue with that, but I need to be sure that I provide the output that my client is looking to have delivered to them, so.
If I can, if I may, the ordinance requires, and again, there was no lighting noted, so you and I could've talked about this earlier, sorry, that it can't exceed a half-foot candle at the residential property line. So that's one of our standards, so along that eastern edge, and I can't be able to see the fixture, so it's gotta be shielded so that I'm not seeing the light, or anybody, a person is not seeing the light bulb. So those are two requirements, and then it's not supposed to exceed one foot candle along the Coolidge and Harvard, the western and the southern boundaries of the site.
Our intention was not to, our intention is to infill the western side because the existing street lighting and that is sufficient to.
Oh, okay.
Supply that, then, you know, we have to, we have to add light to the southern side, which is the parking lot side, the primary sidewalk, and obviously, the backside is, again, you know, a employee exit, dark alleyway, dumpster hiding location, so the back, the east side is what I would consider standard wall pack, but the new LED wall packs that we're talking about are still compact, they're not, you know, they're not large. And I don't have an issue with doing some sort of more decorative fixture on the front or the south side of the building, that would be in harmony with the existing upgrades to the facade that were done. I think we've stepped forward and put forth the effort to show that the vestibule's not a, an eyesore being added to the building, it's not a tack on, it's gonna be an accent that originally, the existing building had, probably had the idea of a overhang metal thing hanging out from the building, because you've got hook locations up on the existing over-the-door, et cetera, so we tried to utilize that and make it something that would be, not look like it was tacked onto the building, but more harmonious with what should happen, so. If I could, I would try and work with Amy to submit something that makes, you know, harmonious sense to.
I'm more than willing to defer to staff on it, it's not something I think we need to have you back for.
No.
But when you say you're going to infill the places where the lights were on the west wall, does that mean you're going to take out the boxes and replace them with masonry, or does that mean you're going to put a cover on them?
No, we're infilling with masonry.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
So long as I can find the exact brick match, which I'm close to, but not quite.
You might consider a decorative accent, perhaps.
Some, for some reason, eight or seven years goes by, and you can't find the same exact.
That is my daily struggle.
Right, mine too.
Okay, that's really the only question that came out.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Buckler?
Are you gonna have signage, because usually Beaumont facilities have fairly distinct signage, where's it gonna go?
They have not, so two things, one, the lease does not allow for any signage that is not on the building. So no monument signage, no, you know, poly sign or et cetera. They have not stated whether they are going to seek signage or not, so I can't honestly answer that question. But again, that's up to them to submit for, you know, signage approval, and there's ordinance that they have to follow. But I do not have an obligation inside the lease document that says I'm gonna provide them certain signage.
Other comments? What's the desire of the planning commission?
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Oh, Ms. Spencer.
Do you want anything, any sort of perimeter around Harvard and Coolidge, or no? I mean, I brought it up, I just don't want it to get missed. If you're okay with it, I'm okay with it, but just don't want it to get missed.
Screen wall along Harvard and Coolidge.
Oh, you're talking about like a low wall kind of thing?
Well, we talked, low wall's required, there's been some discussion that perhaps thirty inches isn't enough, but, you know, we have, whether CVS with their brick piers and the wrought iron, or even Taco Bell further up has the metal fence. Again, you have the power to say it's acceptable, but this is one of these, it's an opportunity.
What's the desire?
I mean aesthetically, I can't really argue with the idea, having that little, even a low wall certainly kind of completes the sense of a contour there, you know.
It encloses it. I would be in favor of putting up a thirty-incher, I think. Oh, what is? Well, let's run around and see, yeah, thirty inches.
Yeah, thirty's fine with me.
Ms. Buckler?
Are we doing?
I think that would be fine.
Are we doing wall fence or nothing?
I like the, I like a mix, but with the brick and the wrought iron, so it's not what you're seeing looking.
Ms. Shadle?
Thirty-inch wall.
Mr. Morrell?
I'm in favor of compliance with our requirements whenever we require something, and I don't really see a good reason for not requiring it.
I'd like to see something, whether it's like an iron fence or a wall.
Mr. Richardson?
I'm in agreement, and I don't, iron or brick, you're.
Mr. Smith?
I see no reason to be contrary to what our ordinance says.
Okay, so may I come in? What do you want, you want a mix of both, or do you want a brick, do you want? Let's give the gentleman an idea.
Well, we say, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith?
Amy, our ordinance says a thirty-inch wall, does it not?
And it says that you guys can adjust that requirement, so.
Because we have used a decorative fence in the past.
Yes, you have.
And the whole point of this is to keep headlights.
Correct.
Away. Now, it's more of an issue, you know, along Coolidge here, it's more of an issue someplace else where we may have residences next door, something like that.
The wall, I think, definitely, but I think you can't argue with, especially when you look at the stretch that's between, along Twelve Mile, between Coolidge and Woodward, and you've just got that parking that just sort of bleeds out onto the sidewalk and onto the, and edges kind of nice to walk along. That's why we require our buildings to be right up to the sidewalk, because it is a nicer edge, but I don't, I think in this case, the headlights are not gonna be the issue because of the uses that are, but I think
Right.
For pedestrians and, you know, keeping the site kind of contained, and we don't want to, in other sites, we've had hedges and things like that, that's not gonna work with this site, there's not enough space to have a five-foot planting edge, but I think a fence could work.
It would also revolve, Mr. Tan, Commissioner Tangeri's concern, which I happen to agree about the thirty-something-wide approach coming up to the twenty-four-foot-wide drive in the back end of the parking space. Our ordinance says a thirty-inch wall, we have allowed fences in the past, decorative fences. I have no issue here with a decorative fence.
Right, me neither.
Some may, but.
Everybody agreed to a decorative fence?
Yes, yeah. I have no objection.
Okay. Ms. Buckler, Ms. Buckler seems to be, yeah.
Very happy.
Okay. All right.
And again, the whole, the whole point is, is the pedestrians walking along, like you used a perfect example, along Twelve Mile there, it's just. And it, it's a very dull and a very uninviting, there's other reasons it's uninviting along there, but along Coolidge, it's something that really would enhance the, the experience, so to speak, of walking up Coolidge. Yeah, I agree.
And along that line, fence, wall, I think either can be pleasing. I think we can, we can trust the planning process to come up with something pleasing and that doesn't look like a, you know, a compound.
It'll help that corner.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
Does anybody have any issue with a five-foot dumpster wall? I don't.
No.
It is what it is.
No.
The wall at the Harvard, and this is what I was alluding to, at the end, it does step down, but it's a little higher. Do we require thirty inches at that location also, Amy, I believe we do.
We want it to step down to thirty inches, but his driveway's not there, is it, I don't think.
Right, the parking space.
Right.
He's on the others, the parking lot's on, or the driveway's on the other side.
It's on the other side, and it does, it does, yes, it does step down, it's a little higher than thirty inches, but maybe it's forty-two inches or something.
But I, but we've had an issue with thirty inches, we've discussed that, that that's not for those F-150s, thirty inches doesn't quite cut it.
Exactly, so I think it's set, it's fine the way it is at the end, unless someone else has some issues.
Okay. Mr. Murad?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve SP 0415 with the following conditions. The applicant provide a screen or a decorative fence along Coolidge and Harvard. Need cut sheets for the lighting fixtures to be used along the building. Reduce the curb cut along Coolidge. Provide a right turn only sign at Harvard. Provide parking blocks along the, those parking spaces along the building. Meet the ordinance when it comes to bike racks. And that is it.
Did you receive a copy of, or has he received a copy of?
DPW, I sent, you guys had a draft, but yes.
I think his revised plans.
Yeah, okay, and so your revised plans are addressing all this?
Yeah, they revised, everything was addressed except for, I think, the fence along the thirty-inch-high decorative fence.
Is there a second to the motion?
Well, second.
Second by Mr. Tangeri. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Shadle?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Morrell?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tangeri?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
We're so glad something's happening.
Yes.
Thank you. A little painful for a little vestibule addition, but we'll make through it, it's all good.
It'll be nice to see that building.
What about the two clothing boxes in the corner down there?
Those, my grateful assistant, who's the greatest Italian on earth, called them two days ago and said, get your clothing boxes out of, and then she also called about the AT&T box that, for the phone, that, you know, probably hasn't worked in seven years. That's going by by.
I look at it every time I drive by and wonder.
Yeah, so all that's heading out, and hopefully, the grass isn't growing in the parking lot and trees growing against the fence, and et cetera, et cetera, so.
It'll be nice to see it finished.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Item number two is discussion, Mark Adler regarding 2659 Harvard, south side of Harvard between Coolidge and Kipling. Is seeking input and consideration of a townhouse development. This is the first step in a planned unit development. Mr. Adler was very nice in actually making up an application for this, so, pre-application for a planned unit development. We don't actually have one of those, I guess we do now. And at this point in time, it is just the pre-application conference, and I've got an excerpt of the ordinance in my report. This is a sketch plan showing the proposed development, as well as the applicant saying how this development proves a recognizable benefit, and those conditions, those site design elements are stipulated. He's supposed to meet three out of the seven. Planning commission's supposed to find that he meets three of the seven, then the applicant's actually allowed to apply for a PUD. This is just a preliminary, and if you find that, yep, it's worth, it's worth moving forward with, then make a recommend, or you make a motion to that effect, and then Mr. Adler can actually apply. The next step would be a public hearing, and we treat it as a rezoning site plan combination, it's actually together instead of traditional rezonings. You have to look at all the uses that would be allowed in it, this one, it's very, it's specific to that plan.
Okay.
And it would go to City Council.
Right. So? So you're on, you're up.
I'm Mark Adler, and I brought with me my architect, Dan Todd, from Progressive Associates, so I can. Time I was here was a little more informal informal, and I think I not only listened, but I think I heard what you wanted, at least I hope I did, based on what we have there. I actually.
Well, you have it, so I'm scared about the bigger ones as well, so. There's no Troy tan. Somebody said, I don't know who said that.
We thank you for that.
So, I put in, we put in some elements of the greens and tans, and changed up the elements also from an architectural standpoint. The concept was to be community, you know, so that we would have a friendly environment where people would gather. And as you've seen the other, the other image, buildings would face each other with walkways and seating areas for informal gatherings, that have the patios and so forth for a little more intimate areas in each individual town. I guess really, just trying to get some more feedback from you, we're both all ears, and I don't know what you think, and I'm sure you have some opinions.
Do we have the, do we have the issue about driving the fire truck around the property solved?
Yeah, that was addressed, my engineer at Green Tech met with the fire chief, and we have that across the back.
Okay, so we've got, we got that resolved.
Yeah, and there's a letter to that effect also.
Great. Great. Okay, Mr. Planning Commission, what do you want to do here, it's open discussion. Mr. Richardson, you want to go first?
Thank you. One concern is snow removal, can you, can you just sort of outline how that will work? You've got a lot of area to remove snow, and then what are you, what are your plans to put, where are you gonna put the snow in the event of a heavy snowfall?
Yes, so one spot it won't go is the fire lane. Okay, that was, that was addressed, and this is, this is a, an association, it'll be set up as a condominium association, townhome setup, that it'll be part of the contract for the contractor to remove the snow, to push it off to the sides where it can on a heavy snow, it will have to be removed if it's gonna obstruct that fire lane. And that would be in the condominium bylaws as well, that would have to be in the contract of the contractor.
And I would imagine if you can get a fire truck in, you can get a snowplow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Tangeri?
Is it one-way circulation or two-way circulation through the site?
Well, that back, the actual part of the fire lane, the bulk of the fire lane, is it actually gonna be grass?
Right, right.
Yeah, so it'll be two-way, I mean, you gotta go in, out, and out, it's not. Yeah, so it'll be two-way. I mean, you gotta go in, out, and out. It's not going to be able to go around the property.
Gotcha.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Speaking of, with a two-lane drive, is 21 feet wide enough? It's a little tight.
It is tight, but we have it all over the city.
I know, I know, okay. So it's, it'll be up to the condo association to-
Well, I think, you know, I had a professor once that talked about, you know, really do we need, and this was, with this, you know, really do we need enough space for two fire trucks to be able to pass each other going 80 miles an hour? I mean, yeah, I guess when you need to, you need to, but 99% of the time, you know, it's going to be people leaving for work, all going this way, and then people coming home all this way, and you might have to go around.
Well, I'm more, I'm more concerned about people backing out of the garages. Because typically when we have parking spaces, we require, what, 24-inch drive, 24-foot drive?
Well, we try to.
We try to, and, yeah. So, I mean, I don't think-
I don't know that the last site plan had that.
Pardon me?
I don't know that the last site plan had that.
Yeah, they did.
Did they?
Yeah. 24 foot and one-half inch.
I have it on a boulevard. I back out of my driveway.
I understand.
I barely have enough time to, you know.
I understand.
And there's cars parked, and I manage to do it without hitting anybody daily.
I'm just raising the question. I would have no problem. Some people are distracted drivers, and I guess they'll get introduced to, get introduced to whoever's parallel parked behind them, and so.
These aren't public streets either.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's going to be the same people, and if you have an issue with your neighbor, one assumes you can talk with them, but it's like, this is not going to be highly trafficked.
I'm just raising the question.
Well, and that does happen. I mean, my husband got backed into because he was parked on the street, and a nice teenage person, you know, parked in, dented right into his car, and-
It happens.
It happens, it happens.
Okay, just raising it.
I bet she didn't do it again.
What about trash receptacles, or is there-
There's room in the garages for-
And they, will they be carting their trash out, or, or is that back to the condo association?
Yeah, this condo association, they'll probably go outside. The way I envision it, they would go right outside the garage, and then the, the trucks would come in, take what they've taken, and then they would, they would have to probably back out.
Back out?
Yeah, they'd have to back out. We had this discussion with Derek and Ashawn.
Okay.
We discussed having the carts.
The carts, yeah, there's a-
Four and a half tall carts.
Wheels.
Yeah.
Two sizes, like, there's a 90 and a 70 or something like that.
And what, was there any discussion about storm detention?
Oh, yeah.
I know, it's a dumb, dumb question, but yeah, of course there is.
We actually have, the engineers have done a preliminary plan, and we talked to Derek about that as well, so we have some pipe, buried pipe.
It's going to be buried pipe?
That's what the plan is, to have buried pipe, yeah, so, and we stopped the engineering plan because we were confused on what maybe this was going to be, so.
Yeah, this is, this is very preliminary. What is the building height approximately? Maybe you don't even have that yet.
Building height from grade to the midpoint of the roof will be about 36 feet.
36 feet. Amy, how does that fit in with our new proposed ordinances as opposed to what we have now? If you don't mind.
Let's see.
As you may or may not know, we're rewriting some ordinances for towns and some stacked flats and things like that, so. They're not done yet, but-
40 feet is what's being proposed for townhouses.
So we're good to go?
Well, it's a PUD, so this is-
Well, I know, but I, I just want to know in our, in our future plans-
This would be allowed.
Good, good, good.
What we're talking about later on tonight.
And I like what you've done without the, maybe I said the Troy beige. Maybe I didn't. My only other comment, and I like the elevations, they're fine. The, the, the garage side elevations are facing the neighbors, and I know on the east you have one neighbor that may or may not be there forever. It's one house. Could you possibly, there is some articulation of it there. Could you possibly introduce some difference, differential, differential siding or some bay windows or something? Because this is the elevation the neighbors are going to be exposed to, especially to the west. And it is, it's a tad flat. The other side's fine, the, that face, that face each other, the front door. This is the business side, and the ends are great, but this, this is the business side, and the outside perimeter of it, or at least east and west, yeah, and it's what the neighbors are going to see. And there, this is a big building, and they're used to, uh, they're used to grass there and maybe a bunch of kids running around playing soccer. So this is going to be quite a, quite a, um, a change for them. And it would just, it might be a good idea to, if you could, add a little, like I said, some size, some color, some different siding, maybe some bay windows or something.
We've attempted to break up the roofline with the table.
Yep, and it is, it is.
I think there's an easy way that we can modify that rear elevation, get some articulation, change your color.
Sure.
Very much like we've got on the front. I think that's a, that's a valid point, and I think that's a easy, you know-
Yeah, and it seems to me you have dining rooms on the back wall and some bedrooms, maybe a bay, maybe not, just, just some ideas.
Now, there's easy with some bays and, you know, projections, we can get to that differentiation.
Sure.
There's a stone on the garage door.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, upper elevation, we can.
Yeah, because as you look over the, the wall or whatever, that's what the people are going to see, that two-story siding. I'm not speaking into my microphone. Two stories of siding, so it'd be nice if that was broken up a little bit. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, along that, that vein, I like what you've responded to our comment with on the, on the Harvard side. Just purely for purposes of discussion, I'm wondering if you think you can do a little more with the, with the
Fire lane side?
No, the Harvard side.
Yeah, it, it, it conceivably still looks more or less like the side of a, of a, of a unit, which it is, but you know, I mean, I don't know.
I discussed a little bit, and again, I discussed it earlier, I think we can pop a couple of windows in there.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Which would be nice in the, in the bedroom and the dining room area. I don't know, another bay, I think you'd make it too heavy.
Yeah.
But I think we can put another window in there that would break it up.
Yep, yep.
Okay, well, okay.
Something that cuts across, that like even came out a little further?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Could you make like a, you know, like, where something kind of around the middle, like, that you brought it out a little further?
Some sort of vanning on a vertical.
Yeah, it's too flat.
Like, some kind of horizontal line that, you know, came out and gave a kind of visual to break it up.
I think we, we can do the same studies with the end elevation that we did with, with the rear. That modification, which will enhance the overall development, but we can do that.
I think that would look better.
It's like some of those big houses going up in Royal Oak and some of the older neighborhoods, and they're just a wall like that with a couple of windows, and it's so awful for the neighbors. Something that breaks it up.
Like, even, even a window over the stairway. Oh, you do have one.
I think that's what that offset one is.
I'm looking at the second floor.
And, and just nurse suggests, oh, I'm sorry.
Alright, now everybody at one.
Yawn, or you've done?
Yawning, yawning, sorry.
Yawning or awning?
You okay? Alright.
Love the idea.
And, and again, in that same vein, maybe the south buildings flip them so we get the articulation on the south side, because that's exposed again to your neighbors.
I'm, what?
You, you have, we have these three buildings in a row on each side, and the, the articulated unit with the bay window that you're seeing here is always on the north side of those buildings. So, take the south building, reverse it, flip it, so that bay, so you get the same elevation facing south instead of the tent, inside the 10-foot division between the two buildings. I know we don't like building two-thirds of them in one direction, the other one the other direction, but just a thought. Get a little, this, what, what is on the south side? Is that a blank wall?
Yeah.
Fachi court.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be, well, be a blank, well, not blank wall, but I think you got windows.
At the end, when, at the end of the south elevation, we'll have windows over.
Okay, yeah, all is suggesting, and again, just a suggestion. Maybe that building gets flipped or that unit gets flipped, so what you have going on the Harvard side here also happens on the south, because the neighbors do have to look at it too, rather than a blank wall. Just a thought.
Basically taking unit two and flipping it one up, you know.
Or the buildings, building three and building four get flipped, possibly, I don't know.
We'll address all the buildings and we'll draw those in.
Other comments?
Mr. Murad?
Garage doors, I hate big garage doors. When I built my garage, I did two small doors. I don't know if it's, if you have enough space to do it, but-
You did the glass, though. It's, you lose a lot of space when you put a thing down the middle.
Yeah.
Because how big is that garage door?
We're working with 16-foot wide garage doors. If you put two nines together, we, we're out of room.
Yeah, okay.
There's more in the middle between them, which is going to get wet.
Right.
I'm afraid.
But you found, you found a distributor or something to do the windows? We had talked about security concerns, which is, it just looks like glass, it's not, though?
Uh, we did probably your glass. I think that-
Oh, okay.
I've talked to my suppliers, so I'll find out.
This was the issue you were having about the glass, right?
Right, on the garage. Well, we, we've been discussing, you didn't want just the metal garage door, but then there was concern about-
I was happy to see the glass there.
Security, and I said, well, maybe they have like a spandrel glass for-
I may have overthought that, too.
I was, I was really good at spending Mr. Adler's money, so.
Because my concern about the glass, I mean-
Oh, I liked the glass, it was, yeah.
Well, one of the things we can do also is we can change the design of each one of those units, garage doors, if not all the same.
Right.
Yeah.
With the elevation.
Not a bad idea.
That's not a bad idea either.
Are you in that?
I think they like that.
That's great.
I think we can, we can help that, too.
Oh, yeah. Anybody else? Anybody else got comments?
I, I personally am very excited for this project.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's lovely.
We think it'll really be a nice looking.
I think it'll be a great looking thing.
It's shaping up very well. The, the, the public amenities in the middle, I think they're, it's nice to have two different things in there, and it's going to be something nice to look down the middle of it, you know? It's-
And when they need PT, they can just go down the road.
I think-
Yes.
That's right.
We have ordinances. I think Commissioner Murad already put a down payment on one of these. I don't, not yet.
Doesn't have, doesn't have two garage doors.
Can't do that.
I might. Okay, anything else?
I would just add, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think this is an exciting project, and we appreciate your coming in here soliciting our ideas and your willingness to work with us. I think if we all keep working together, this is going to be a very special thing for Berkeley.
It's a little different for you, isn't it?
Oh, no, Dan and I worked together on my, not this.
Oh, yeah, well, that's why I meant-
This concept?
Right.
It's new.
Yeah, okay. You have a place.
It's not in Berkeley.
No, and I guess, I guess all our comments about the elevations are purely, is, you know, the neighbors have to look at it too. And this is very nice down the middle, but something to, that's a big, that's a huge impression on, on, on the project and maybe future projects, and we want it to be successful. But they have to look at it too, and it's a big building that they're not used to, so I think it'd be, that's really the, I think what we're trying to get across with our elevation comments, and you're aware of that, so.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we're there on that. Now, next steps.
Make a motion, finding a recognizable benefit and articulating which, at least three out of the seven, that you think this one demonstrates, that it's met those. And then the applicant will be off and running and able to develop the plans. Full packet of plans. It's going to go to engineering, it'll go before you for a public hearing, so we're going to invite everybody within 300 feet, and-
Does Hubble, Roth, and Clark get to look at this, too?
Yeah, yeah. Derek Schuler would like them to look at it, so.
Alright.
Along with DPW's going to look at it again, and-
Everybody will look at it.
Everybody's going to look at it.
Okay.
Do, Mr. Chairman?
The attorney will review the PUD agreement, all of that.
Right.
Do we choose the benefits, or do they, the, does the applicant suggest what they might be? Because I know when we do PUDs in our office, they always have the seven, or you have to pick four, five, or whatever.
Well, he did.
He did.
Oh, he did, I'm sorry, he did. I'm sorry, I apologize.
You did already.
Yeah, I'm just asking for the record. Is that something we would do?
And then I suggested some as well.
I did read this, but it was a couple of days ago, I totally forgot.
Page five.
I'm on page four, I'm sorry. And these are the four I chose, actually.
Well, they must write that. Because two are not applicable.
Right, sorry. Delete that, strike that from the correspondence.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morrell?
I move that we approve the pre-application conference
Okay.
with the following findings.
Go ahead.
Number one, that a high-quality architectural design beyond the site plan requirements of, of this type exists. Number two, that the applicant has provided a provision for open space, public plazas.
Okay.
Number three, that he has efficiently consolidated what was a poorly dimensioned parcel, and that a complimentary mix of uses or a variety of housing types has been provided.
I would agree with you on that, yeah. Sounds good.
But you can't second. Somebody else has to.
No, I know. Seconded by Mr. Murad. Any additional comments? Do we have everything we need, Ms. Hansen?
Yep.
Then let's take a roll call vote.
That a recognizable benefit exists, so now we're going to vote on it. Buckler?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Morrell?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay, we're off and running, kids.
Yeah, very good.
Alright. Great job. I just think it's going to be a-
First of a few consults.
I really think this is going to be something.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think this is a good, you know, in light of what we've been talking about, and maybe our next item is also on time. In light of what we've been talking about with our form-based code, this is, this is the kind of thing we're looking for.
Right.
Maybe not in this orientation, but this is the type of thing we, we don't have too much of in our town that we're looking for, so.
Right.
It's a good step.
You know, Mr. Chairman, that- this design, or this, this unit, this development, is really going to be what people are going to look at when they start looking at our new ordinance.
Yeah.
I mean, really, they're going to say, this one's either going to, they're either going to hold this one up and say, well, if this is what it's going to be, I think it's great. And then you're going to have those other people who are going to say, if this is what it's going to be, well, then I don't want anything to do with it. And, and so it will be interesting to see how that plays out, because I think we all agree that this is more or less exactly what we want.
Yeah.
There's no question.
That's why you can't have any lane.
And I think it's a good way to be able to show, this actually, you know, will, I think when it comes time to present the form-based code to the public, this is the kind of images we want to show.
Yeah.
I mean, really.
Yep.
So.
Great job. Yep.
Thank you, I'm trying. Just make it harder for me to, with the pressure.
Okay. Item number three.
Item number three is discussion regarding proposed residential form-based code. Last meeting, we got through single-family and duplexes, and it was late, so we called it a night. We've got townhouses and apartments or flats to go through as far as the requirements go. I did not copy everything again, I apologize. Usually do that, I did not do that from the last time. If you need me to run and make copies, I will, or if you want to defer it until next time, we can do that, or if you just want to sort of talk generally about strategy.
Why don't we talk about strategy, and we'll, we'll do this, dig into this when you got, we got all the materials in front of us, and that's okay. We've got a lot going here, so. Just strategy, looking at it, where we're at, where is LS, L on this right now?
Well, they're waiting for you guys.
Oh, they're waiting for us?
You, yes.
Well, we had this long- Well, we had this long, long discussion the last time she was here about the, discussing all of the townhouses and all of that. We've still gotta have this in-depth discussion about apartments and those kinds of things.
Well, and that's what I said in my report, you know, I think if you like the idea of the townhouses, I, I, I think if I may, what is maybe causing it, it, concern is how we're gonna represent where those can go, and
Yeah.
And I think the idea of the collector streets is a good idea.
Yeah.
You don't know that you necessarily wanna color the whole map, because it makes it look like it's all coming tomorrow, which it's not. Um, so I think we can, um, do something in the ordinance as far as defining which roads are collector versus, we already talked about the major thoroughfares. I, I think we can do it that way, um, because I think it, it's not gonna end up being like the map that she showed, it's gonna be in pieces. Likewise, with the apartments, I mean, we already do have multiple-family zones. This could be adopted as part of that, the, the apartment language, and, you know, get the form-based code, so that if somebody does redevelop on parcels that are already zoned, RM or RMH, um, that it'll look like this, and then kind of wait and see what happens with, you know, whether it's the townhouses, what the reaction is, whether we get more of those, depending on what happens with, um, the transit vote, and kind of wait and see. Um, I, you know, I think it's good to make grand gestures, but if everything is gonna get tripped up in the weeds, then it's, there's not much point. I mean, what's, then, then it all gets thrown out, and that's not good.
I don't wanna do that.
Um, but if you, I mean, I'm all, I'm all in favor of grand gestures, but I just don't want it to, I don't wanna have it fall apart. So I guess that's something you guys, you know, you live here, I just work here, so, you know, what do you think?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
Did we discuss these areas, and we talked about, there was quite a bit of this on the map.
Yep.
Did we discuss it as an overlay, or were, were we gonna change the zoning? Refresh my poor memory.
What we had talked about was that the zoning would change.
Mm-hmm.
To, you know, and, um, so it could either be done as a zoning map, which would be quite a, then we'd have to notify everybody, and
Right.
I don't know that that's... I think we wanna communicate it, but we wanna be, it, there's not like there's an imminent development happening, so it's, I, I think a text change, when I'd spoken with the city attorney, we had talked about, um, the collector roads, we could do that as a text amendment, so the, the townhouses could be done as a, as a text amendment, and define the collectors as a text amendment, in which case then, you know, we've talked about having an open house, you talk about it like that, but you're not notifying everybody that's within three hundred feet of all the collector roads in the city. Um, the, the more, the multiple-family, um, when we had talked about, um, near Eleven Mile and Woodward, which would be if, if everything goes, again, according to plan with the transit, that would be the transit-oriented development, that would be the location. Um, and you get into a chicken and egg thing, do you zone it first, or do you wait for the transit to come, and, you know, what do you do first? You wanna be welcoming to it, but you don't necessarily wanna, um, you don't wanna cause panic if it's twenty years away either, if that's not the kind of development you wanna see unless there's a train station there. Um, so we had talked about the fact that if we're gonna do the, expand the multiple-family, that was a pretty big change, and that would be within a radius of a proposed transit stop, so that would involve a map amendment and, and notifying everybody. Which is why I'm thinking maybe we do it in a couple of steps, and we get, you know, we see how the form-based works for townhouses, duplexes, and then, um, if we wanna, you know, you can always rezone in a year, if you want to, or to. You've got the, you know, you've got the basis, you guys don't, because I forgot to make copies, but you have the basis of it here, and, um, then...
Couldn't it also be a master plan item? Next time we update our master plan, say eleven and Woodward.
Well, you've already adopted a TOD as part of your master plan.
I know, I know, but...
You wanna adopt it again?
Yeah, I guess we have.
You did?
Yeah.
So it's really already there?
It is.
As a master plan?
It is.
Okay, never mind.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Richardson?
I just have a couple of questions. Um, in, i- i- is my cr, is my memory failing as usual, or did, have we, um, been provided previously with a, a map that shows
Yeah.
the neighborhood within a quarter mile of the proposed transit stops? Do we have?
Yes.
Yes.
So we know what those streets are, is that right?
Yes.
Um, do you happen to know if there's, uh, are, are they all zoned, uh, uh, none, none of them are zoned for apartments right now, is that right?
No.
Okay, uh, the other...
I mean, there, there's kind of a few of them behind Woodward commercial properties, but there's not a big swath.
Generally no, okay. Uh, just my other question is, is there any reason that we should be pushing ahead with rezoning, um, to facilitate the transit plan itself, or is that really just kind of not something we need to think about right now?
You know, I think, okay, I, I don't know that necessarily the transit is the push, the, the moving factor. I think it is good to have denser development in general. I think it makes a much more vital place, it is a good thing. Uh, it is good to have a variety of housing types, that is also a good thing. Now, having said that, I get that it's a very difficult thing when you do not have a developer knocking on the door saying, hey, I wanna do this, and that's what I say in my report, is that, you know, this is gonna be just like with Greenfield, and I think Greenfield was the right thing to do as well, is, you know, rezoning it to allow for development that may or may not come within a generation. Um, but I don't know that you necessarily, you've, you know, this is a lot, this is a big change, and I don't wanna see it drag on because this is the hard part, you know, I'd rather see you guys, there's, there's no reason we can't do it in baby steps, and get the language adopted for those areas that are already zoned that way, and then see what happens with the BRT, and certainly if the, if the millage or whatever tax they're gonna, they're proposing gets adopted, it's not like they're gonna have the, the stop built the next day, you're gonna have time.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Other comments? I saw a very interesting apartment design.
Agouti in Barcelona?
No, this was, I'm trying to think of where it was, and, and I looked at it very, it was very interesting, because it was all these stacked elements to it, and, um, I thought, would that look cool at Woodward and, and Eleven Mile Road? It was designed in such a manner as that the first floor initially could be rental units, and
You made it business?
And as ti, as time went on, they could be converted to business use, and that was the whole concept of it, the business, and but it was all these stacked units, and had terraces off on the upper floors that people could walk out on, and it was very interesting, and I'm I'm gonna try to find that again, and bring it in, because it was quite unique. It just wasn't a standard box. It was well put together and thought out. And I thought, hmm, that's the first time I really became sort of, hmm, apartment enthralled.
So when do you think, um, timeframe, not even timeframe-wise, but just sort of, again, strategy-wise, when do you think would be a good time to have, you've talked about having an open house at the library. I'm guessing after the holidays?
Yeah, I don't think there's no, any point trying to do it now.
Right, but even, even if there was, I don't know that now's the right time, I don't think people are thinking about it, even if you guys are ready to go.
I would say January, February, somewhere right in that timeframe, towards the end of January, first of February, people will be...
I had asked you a question about when you...
Would you do that, like, on a Saturday or Sunday?
Do you think?
Huh?
I don't think.
Saturday?
Saturday.
Okay.
Because we, when we did the master plan, didn't we do it on a?
It was a Saturday.
It was a Saturday, yeah.
Yep. Okay, we can do that, um, I'll have that deadline in mind. Um, and again, I am sorry I didn't include that. Um, porches versus stoops. We had talked about that porches have to have a roof, stoops don't, and then it occurred to me, I don't know where, I mean, I know where one starts and one stops, but then does a stoop become a porch?
Well, it's not a stoop anymore.
Yeah. A porch, when it's, when it's...
You have the Marty Smith hotline.
When you put a stoop on it, then it's...
Much wider than the door.
A stoop is really just there as an entry point.
Stoop is just a, a, a...
Entry point.
Uh, yeah, it's an entry point.
More than four by four?
Well, not necessarily, I mean, I don't know if we wanna throw, if we wanna define it by, by dimensions, maybe we do, I don't know.
Hundred and fifty percent of the width of the door.
Yeah, something like that.
You know, a stoop, maybe get some decorations out there. To me, a porch, you can put some seating out there, not one, or you, you know, a little more than just sitting on your steps, it's something that, it's a, it's a living space.
A stoop is not a living space. Unless you sit on your steps.
They're both transition zones in between inside and out. A, a covered porch is just a better transition.
It's a living space.
If you look at the Williamsburg tradition, they had no porches. You look at houses in Williamsburg, it's a flat wall with a door.
Right.
And not saying it's a bad look, but I think in our climate, and in this environment, that having that transitional space is, is key.
Keeps it cooler in the summer, warmer in the winter. So...
So you want a dimension for a stoop?
Well, you know, you're...
Yes, you do, you want a dimension.
I think I don't wanna have somebody, you know, tell me that was a porch, and it should've had a roof, and I said, well, I thought it was a stoop.
I'd say four by five max, but I don't...
I, I don't wanna put a dimension to it, someone else can.
I don't either. I, I would just peg it to the width of the door. I, like, something like a hundred and fifty percent of the width of the door, or something in that range.
Dimension or your dimension?
If it's, if it's the door plus half the door, or less, then it's a stoop.
Agreed.
I, someone else can determine that, I don't want to...
You can't put anything on that.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Chair? Did we, did we not discuss some dimensions previously, um, as far as depth?
For the porch.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, okay, so you're looking purely as...
We're looking at the stoop.
Well, I wanna know, I know what a porch is, what we want the porch to be.
We want a definition for stoop.
I didn't know where the...
Stoop is.
Stoop became a porch, that was the part that...
It's the dimensions of what we've already discussed being a porch.
Well, we said a porch had to be a certain depth in order to qualify as a porch.
Okay.
So, okay.
All right.
What you said, if it's gotta be that, other than that, it's a stoop, and it doesn't...
The stoop, then the question becomes...
And, but what if it's a really kind of long stupid, excuse me, long skinny, um, yeah, well, I have kind of a long stoop at my house.
If you meet or exceed one dimension, you're a porch.
What?
If you meet or exceed one dimension, you're a porch.
What were the, do we have the dimensions?
I don't, I'm so...
Um, are, are we contemplating the allowance of stoops in the front?
Yeah, we had said, but a, but a porch had to have a roof.
Okay.
We're gonna allow, it had to be stoop or porch.
I think we're gonna get a lot of stoops out of this arrangement, but...
Okay, well, we don't...
I like the idea of having the width tied to the door. I think that's a great idea. It doesn't say your stoop must be four feet or six feet, it's, it's on the suggestion, it, it will be one hundred and fifty percent of the door. If you have a four-foot door, or a five-foot door, or double doors, or I don't know, but if it's, if it's a hundred and fifty percent of that, it's a stoop. It doesn't need a roof. Anything more than that, it's a porch.
I, I appreciate that.
There's not room to put a care on a stoop that's only a hundred and fifty percent the width of your door.
What we had said was, porches must be covered with a roof, and must be at least six feet deep, but no more than eight feet deep, and I guess my issue was, okay, if it's five feet deep, and it's kind of
Ten feet long.
Longish, it sort of looks like kind of maybe a bad porch, but
I think...
It could be, do we wanna say, a stoop has to be this, a stoop is sort of a square, and a porch is something else, that...
Well, stoop could be rectangular.
I think once we get this written down, I think that Marty and I have to sit down and come up with all the nasty ways we can use our own rules and, and just make ugly architecture out of it.
Great, you could, you could do a, a, a knoblong, or an oval, or a...
Because my, my concern is that having this fallback, not a porch
Okay.
is just going to encourage those.
Okay.
Because our, our requirements associated with the porch are so great, that as soon as you hit there, your price triples. And, and I'm not saying, I, I don't know that I have an answer yet, because I do think what, your, your question is valid. I'm, but I'm trying not to, you know, I, I don't think, I mean, are we, are we encouraging, is the goal here to encourage stoops, or merely allow them?
Wouldn't, wouldn't the market answer that question? People want stoops?
You know...
Or they don't want.
Zoning form-based codes are beyond market, because what you're trying to do is you're trying to craft the atmosphere of the neighborhood.
Yep.
And, and the market may be, nobody wants a porch, and, and you know, when, when you look at there's that thing where you have this nice neighborhood, and people won't like it, and they move in, and then they start making changes, and it's not nice anymore. And that's kind of what form-based codes are supposed to prevent, and so it's kind of anti-market, when it comes right down to it. It's, it's what do we want out of the city, as opposed to what do you want as a guy moving in here? Because you're moving in here because you want what we have in the city.
Yeah.
I, I mean, that's what it is to me.
All right, why don't you guys?
If you defined a, if you define a stoop, how's that gonna influence market behavior? They'll just, they'll build the stoop then.
That's my, again, my concern is, is that we're, by crafting a really beautiful porch requirement, allowing stoops, we're gonna push everybody into the stoop zone, because
I'm trying to stay out of the stoop zone.
So it sounds to me, it sounds...
We all do that.
It sounds to me, it's like we want the porch, that the porch should be the ruling factor here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like that to me.
Yeah, I don't disagree at all.
If you got a side door and you wanna stoop, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, we want porches, all right.
Yeah. Let's go porches and be done with that.
Do you have any idea, we've been talking about a lot of, that this would be new construction, do you have any idea on, okay, you're adding onto your house, what are we going to, you know, do you get a pass, or is it over a certain square footage, or a certain monetary amount, where you gotta, all bets are off, you gotta comply? That's a very good question.
Most of the, most of the add-ons are out to the back, at least in my neighborhood, because there's no room to go to the side.
Right, that's true.
Or the front.
And, and that might be okay. I just wanna have a conversation.
Closing a porch.
That we're all, you guys all can say that, say, yeah, it doesn't count, it's only for new construction.
I think there has to be a trigger if you're gonna be doing a renovation.
You wanna think about that?
You wanna think about that, King?
Can, can I just offer a comment?
Wouldn't our current site plan requirements be sufficient to?
A single-family home, there's...
Cover that issue?
All you have are, for a single-family home today, it's, it's gotta meet setback requirements, and that's it. We don't have window articulation, and stoops versus porches, and all of that.
Well, from a taxing standpoint, don't we say if it's changed more than fifty percent, or if the square footage is increased more than fifty percent, I think it is, right?
Then what happens?
Gets reassessed?
I have no idea. I don't know what the county does.
Maybe check into that, and that's what we use, is so if they're gonna add more than fifty percent to their home, or a certain percentage to their home, then they have to meet the new guidelines?
So if they cross the assessing threshold, essentially?
Stoop zone and assessing threshold, I like that.
You could do a lot of damage to the look of a house under that assessing threshold.
I would, I would think that if you... I would, I would think that if you change the envelope.
And I could, I know.
If you change the envelope, thank you. I make it a point of, I don't, hey, I don't build the buildings, I make them cost more. I think when you look at additions, I, I think if you make any change to your house that involves the appearance, it's going to be seen from, from the street by the public, it's got to comply with the form-based code. Not the whole house, but the pieces that you add.
Right.
If, if you add a, a bay window and we have a requirements for bay windows, then you got to comply with the bay window requirement. You know what I mean? It's, I don't think, because that's ultimately the point of the, the form-based code.
You really want to micromanage single-family homes like this?
I don't, I don't believe that's micromanagement.
Well, they're micromanaging them now in, with, you know, in the electrical and in the, you know, and in that kind of stuff too.
In what?
Well, you've got to put an outlet, it's got to be tamper-proof versus regular.
That's code stuff.
That's code.
But this is code stuff too. That's code two.
I don't want to, I don't want to micromanage.
Code here for Berkeley, it's not the code in every community that you have to have a tamper-proof.
At what point does it become micromanagement? I guess is really the question, because I would tend to agree with you, but, you know, if I build an addition, if I want to, if I want to add a dormer on the top of my house and are you saying that as long as it's not fifty percent of the value, I can do whatever the heck I want? Because that's the whole point of the form-based code. I'm not envisioning a, a wave of teardowns in Berkeley that would require compliance with this. I mean, we're trying to manage the new construction and any teardowns that may occur. But we're also trying to manage the slow accreting development where, you know, you build a house, you know, a bungalow that has a, has a, a six-foot, you know, just a stoop on it. So then you add a covered porch, well, and you enclose the porch and then you add doors and windows. And pretty soon, what you had is completely different.
Right.
And, and all from not complying. I mean, it, it's not a question of whether or not they complied. It's, it's, if that's what the ordinance allowed, then that's what they did and it was fine.
You end up with that house in the corner of Henley and, um, Earlmont, where they took the little brick bungalow and they added the giant two-story addition on the sun, they had the, they had a little sun, sunroom that connected to the garage. And they added the two-story vinyl addition behind the little brick bungalow.
And, well, I mean.
In this monstrosity of a house.
You could see additions where it looks like one house actually landed on another house all over the city.
That's one of them, that's it, it does, it looks like it got dropped on it.
Yeah, it's like sort of a Wizard of Oz thing where, you know, the wicked witch of the West was, it went. But my point, but my point is, is that if, if we can't regulate additions with this code, then why are we even bothering?
Agreed.
Because that's the majority of what we're going to see.
Agreed.
I think.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I, uh. I'm a little uncomfortable with the direction we're taking this. Uh, and I, I don't often come at this from a traditionalist perspective, but, um, my understanding of the reasons why we're considering a form-based code is to accommodate different lifestyles, to accommodate different, uh, living arrangements that people have. Single people, childless couples, older empty nesters, people with children. And we want to allow people that, with those kind of housing needs into our neighborhoods on terms where what, what, what gets built for them fits into the existing character of Berkeley. It seems like now we're, we're talking about, you know, uh, a set of architectural standards that would apply to everybody and might actually change, um, might actually change Berkeley. Once we get done, I don't know, I don't know how far we're going to take this, but, um, I would just add that in Huntington Woods, that they, they have a very controversial issue with the historical district. And people, and people there are very resentful, residents there are very resentful of the procedure that's been set up whereby uh, they have to gain approval to repaint their house, to put in new windows, to, um, to do any of the kind of homeowner maintenance that people do. They need to get permission from a committee. And how far are we going to wind up from that situation through this process? I, I'm, I'm just sounding a note, I guess, of, of caution. I, I suppose I'd put it that way.
I don't think any of us know exactly where we're, where all this is going from the standpoint of what is Berkeley going to look like twenty years from now? I don't know what it's going to look like.
I don't either.
Because I'm seeing changes right now going on that I really didn't envision ten, fifteen years ago. And, and they're going in and I haven't seen anything that's really upsetting the apple cart, so to speak, yet. But I've seen a lot of people tack onto their houses that, you know, I look at them and I say, holy, why did you do that?
Well, I do too, but there's, there's a certain.
But there was, there was nothing there to say, you know, maybe you ought to rethink this. And the question is, should there have been some rethinking about some of this or not? And I don't have that answer. And I don't know.
I think we need to think about it.
Where is, where is the point? How far do you regulate, I guess is the issue.
Well.
You'd need to leave something up to the individual homeowner's choice, even if you don't happen to agree with it, I'm, I'm suggesting.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McLaughlin.
I agree, I agree with you in, to, to the point, except we're spending all this time on, you know, the side of the, you know, the, you know, the, the townhouses because that's going to be seen by the neighbors and we want it to blend in as much as we can to the neighbors. We want them to not.
Blend in has nothing to do with.
Have blended, but we don't want them to be offended by them, we want it to be pleasing, same thing goes. So there's, because there's a certain character to the neighborhoods, there's a certain character to Berkeley. So I, I don't think there's anything wrong with.
The angle, if I may interrupt, the angle I come from by asking those questions is it's such a massive building compared to its neighbors. Has nothing to blend in or offending anybody. I don't care if it looks like a, a modern building, if it fits in, or if, maybe it fits in, but don't, don't, when I said that, don't get me wrong. It's the mass of the building I was concerned about breaking it up. And that's why I was concerned with that back wall. Has nothing to do with blending or offending anybody. I, the, people put on good additions, people put on bad additions. People put on good additions that some people think are bad and the vice versa. You do a nice addition that eighty percent of the people think stinks. So how do you, without becoming design police?
Exactly.
But, and who's going to do that? Now, I, I just, I just, I think we have to think about it.
You can't legislate, you can't demand people have good taste and think of all the issues. And I agree that, that some of the homeowner associations and historical societies restrict too much. And it makes it real difficult and it, there's, there's, there's innate hostility at first before you see the, the resolution. And I, I've seen some really bad alter, um, ru- restoration, well, remodeling. They aren't restoring anything, they're destroying. And, and I do think there is, part of the innate appeal of Berkeley is that there is a mix and there is historical stuff here. I, I think a lot of the homes were Sears kit houses, a lot of them. And they were very good for the, where the city was back then. The house I'm in was built in nineteen oh one, it's probably one of the oldest.
It is.
And I have, well, had the little man, he's a ghost, but he visited outside until I planted apple trees. I come to find out the house was built by the Pickles and it was in the middle of an orchard. Kind of weird. But there's a whole flavor and we have to figure out a way to build a real flavorful pie if the people want to stay. And the point with the form-based codes is we want people to move into Berkeley and then stay and raise their families and live their life and make this a long-lasting home. That makes sense.
Okay. Have we given a lot of, sort of thought to this?
I have a strategy.
Okay.
There's, we're still working on this, this is hard.
Yes, it is. I knew this wasn't going to be easy when we started it and it's going to take us a little bit of time to work away.
You want to, and again, I am sorry about the townhouses and the apartments not getting into your packet. You want to do that at the regular November meeting?
Yeah, because what do we got in November, anything?
Perhaps Mr. Adler, that's it.
Hmm?
Perhaps Mr. Adler, that's it.
Okay.
I'd be surprised if he shows up, he's got a lot of work to do.
I was going to say, it's a lot of planning.
But maybe he will.
Okay.
He's got.
Let's talk about this in November.
Okay, and I will remember to make copies, sorry.
Okay.
We move up to November.
Twenty-fourth.
Said I will, we find, is there any citizens who care to address the planning commission?
Point of the evening. So we'll move around to Commissioner's staff comments. Who?
Environmental?
Nothing to report this month.
Okay.
Chamber?
Chamber, I did attend the meeting on the fourteenth. They, uh, reported about the state of the city event. They had sixty-five, five attendees there. The golf outing back in September, the number of golfers was down, but they somehow, uh, revenue was up a little bit. So that was good to hear and a portion of the revenue from that will go to the holiday lights parade. Uh, they are working on another map, city map with some advertising on it. Come November, there are going to be four new board members, so three members, I think are, uh, their terms are coming up and one member, uh, his business has taken him out of the area. And the chamber holiday party will be December ninth at Patrick J's.
DDA met on, uh, October fourteenth and they welcomed the newest member of the board, Ross Gavin from Berkeley. He is a resident on Lockmore and he's employed with the Oakland County Treasurer's Office. And, um, I believe that there is going to be another opening. One of the members is just conflicted and busy with, um, work requirements. Everyone at the meeting, um, expressed gratitude to Jane for her service here in Berkeley for fourteen years. And, um, let's see. I, I did attend the state of the city luncheon and it was lovely and very interesting. What else? There was a discussion about, um, the library and the improvements and money was voted for the improvements. There was some discussion on the Rabina Twelve Mile Project. And, um, ladies' night with a, uh, chamber, ladies' night out was a success. Then the maintenance and beautification committee reported and again, they were talking about the lights for the holidays and so forth on Twelve Mile. And I did pipe up and complain a little bit, ask some questions about what about Coolidge? And that's about it.
Okay. Well, council met, um, on the nineteenth of October. And, um, the lighting, the signage, that's had its second reading, that's passed, that's done and over with. The, um, find my place here. The city has approved a contract with Carlisle Wortman Associates to upgrade the master plan for the Parks and Rec five-year plan. Do we get, do we look at that? We don't have to look at that at all? Okay. That was my question to you. And they'll be working on that. The other thing that I wanted to, the library is going to have some furniture, they're going to redo a lot of the furniture and computer workstations in their library designs is working on that project. And, uh, other than that was, the rest of it was mostly executing agreements for switching half of this and updating the, the budget. So with that, I'll run around the table and we'll see if anybody's got anything else they want to say. Mr. Tengary?
Nothing further.
Happy Halloween.
Michado?
Go vote.
Right. Mr. Morrell?
Uh, once again, I apologize for being late.
Mr. Morad?
Just to remind everybody to vote.
Ms. Pop?
Um, I painted my building. Well, I didn't, painters did, so it looks a whole lot better there on, on Coolidge.
Mr. Richardson?
Long as my fellow commissioners, I urge all ten of the people that are watching tonight to get out and vote. Our democracy can't work unless people vote.
Absolutely.
No comments.
Mr. Mark Smith, no comments this evening? I think I, Ms. Manson?
Uh, well, last month I was in Washington DC and happened to be on my way to a really great burger place near, uh, the Capitol and happened to walk down this really great street and made a point of taking a picture of it and then this was my family waiting for me, being, uh, taking pictures. Anyway, so it had all those things that we talked about with townhouses with the different, yep. Not even a stoop.
I would say that's a stoops. But what's the difference between a stoop and a stoop?
Those would not be allowed today.
Oh, that's great, thanks for sharing.
Anyway.
Is that in Alexandria?
No, that was right by the Capitol.
By the Capitol?
By the Capitol, yep.
Oh, really?
Yep, kind of tucked to the south of it. Very nice neighborhood, we pulled it up on Zillow and went, oh, we made a lot of money. Okay, we won't move there.
It's expensive to live there.
Anyway, it was just funny to see a really great street like that and say, yeah, just do that. Nothing.
I like that.
Nothing else this evening? I don't have anything else this evening, but like everybody else on the thing, on the board has indicated tonight, we do have an election next week and everyone should get out and vote. I know it takes a little bit of time, but it's a very important process that we Americans have and we should take full advantage of it. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Moved by Commissioner Morrell, sir, second. Seconded by Commissioner Morad. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Coast, the meeting is adjourned.